Megan, are you there?
Hi David, yes I am.
Hold on one second. Are you there Megan?
I am, yep, can you hear me?
I, I can. I just wanted to say I haven't started writing up, I know you're gonna, you're like the teacher that wants the report in for the town report.
David, you can get an extension, no problem.
I haven't started writing it yet, you know, I planned on doing it this past weekend and then the storm was there and I'm like, great, this is a great weekend to do it. And then I shoveled too much and I couldn't, I just didn't.
No problem, no problem, um, I'm trying not to be a pest, but I am sending out some reminders, so, and I've gotten a bunch in, so I'm ahead of schedule. Last year I was on maternity leave until March, so I'm, I'm still ahead of schedule on the town reports, so no problem.
I will, I will, I will do my best to get it done as soon as possible. And Becky, I got in there today to sign the documents that you needed.
I had an email from Robert, so thank you. Yeah, Lori had indicated she wants a lot more real signatures now because the building's open.
That's okay. Yeah. Get there when I can.
Yeah, I mean, I'll keep asking Greg and Lori, which, you know, but as long as we have either your authorization through the minutes and whatnot.
Yep.
Do you have the auditors around now?
Yeah, I saw the people in the, in the selectmen's room there and wasn't sure who they were actually, but now that you mention that, that makes sense.
Yep, they'll be there for two to three weeks. I had my session with them today.
I hope that went well.
Oh, I think so.
So it's not just a financial audit, it's everything? Or was it financial on the things you do with the money?
Yeah, I, I turn in a lot of money for the town, usually, you know, over a million dollars that I turn in for you guys between leases and contracts and
Yeah.
licenses.
Hopefully we're not long tonight, this looks like it's, you know, I say it, I, you know, it probably jinxed me, jinxed us.
Why, I hope you have a plan.
I try during meetings, if, if I find a way to cut in and sort of cut off, but sometimes it's difficult because you don't want anybody to think that you're not being, you know, you're being favorable to one side or you don't want to hear them or whatever, and that's never the case, it's just, you know, sometimes we just have to.
Two, two minute to three minute, you know, maybe we need to take this as an agenda item or, you know, take it further, but.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know if there'll be many comments tonight, you know.
I just hope it doesn't get harassing.
Exactly, and there were some, the, the letters, one guy thought we were gonna read them, we're not reading the letters, you know, that's not what we do. The school, the school committee.
You guys haven't like talked about him as a board to be able to even discuss them and.
The school committee reads, the school committee reads public comments, that's what they do, they ask people to send in letters and they read it, and I think that's what people thought we did, and no. I know Greg sent one, one of the guys a letter saying, you know, you feel free to come in and make your statement, but we're not reading it.
Yeah, I walked downtown to, both yesterday and today at lunch, and the sidewalks aren't bad, you know.
Yeah, the sidewalks, the sidewalks look good, they gotta get rid of the berms, which I know they're doing on Tuesday and Wednesday. I'm always concerned for the elderly and the handicap folks who pull up, they wanna go somewhere and they, they have to walk a mile to get to an opening, or they can't fit through an opening.
Somehow we need to stress better to the businesses that it's part of the bylaw, they, they need to help clean up too, because what's in front of their business, just like our homes, we need to do our sidewalks in front of our homes and keep it clean and keep the hydrants open. I know I had talked to the people at Finex Theater and they were all for it with helping to take care of, in front of the theater, so it, it did get done.
Yeah, the, you know, it's difficult when some of the businesses, they dig their little two foot wide entryway, you know, it's, it's wide enough, if you have, if you're, if you're able bodied and you can put one foot in front of the other, you can get through, but if somebody has a cane or a walker, they're not getting through there. So. And then, then they, those people can't go downtown, they have to find someplace else to go.
But yeah, they were, open table was open, so I talked to Deb Russell for a few minutes. They were servicing a lot of the folks there today.
At last.
What's wrong Becky?
I lost the video.
I can see you.
Okay. Alright, got it.
Good evening.
Hello.
Yeah, I, I'll do it tomorrow, I gotta get into.
Chris is back in the regular place.
Unfortunately. Unfortunately.
Home quarters.
It's about seventy degrees from the last time I was on the field.
We're getting feedback from you.
Oh, my phone's too close.
We're just waiting on Justine and it's almost seven o'clock, still got some feedback, is that? Can't tell where it's coming from though, Justine's coming on now. Does everybody else hear that, like double? No? Like an echo?
There is an echo.
I don't know where it's coming from. Now it's not there. Okay, it's seven o'clock, so I'm, I'm gonna start, as a preliminary matter, this is David Gavin, Chair of the Managed Select Board, and allow me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me, members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jeff Swanberg.
Here.
Armin Dear-Percurian.
Here.
Krista Silva.
Here.
Justine St. John.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative, hold on, Greg Johnson.
Here.
Megan Zamudo.
Here.
And I see the other staff members, Becky, I see you, Deputy Chief, I see you, I don't know who else I see from the staff, but I, I don't know if we'll be, if you'll be speaking, I think Deputy, the chief will be, because we've got to appoint you to a committee tonight, so, anyway. Good evening, the, this open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted via Zoom, everybody on the agenda will be participating remotely, and we will allow for the public to provide comment via this Zoom process. The Board would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by us, the, um, there's further action that's required by us, I will add the matter as appropriate. Again, I'm getting feedback here, is anybody else getting that? If everybody can mute, mute there, except for the Board members, unless you want to also, but anyway. I'll start over. Good evening, this open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted via Zoom, everyone on the agenda will be participating via Zoom, and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The Board would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by the Board, I will allow, I will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending upon the comment, the Board may, if we're able within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on any matter. Please note that while we're all here remotely, and it's being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless it's otherwise required by law. The agenda is posted on the town's website and identifies how the public may join, please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that everybody being on Zoom is participating via that method. Accordingly, please be aware that everybody may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer, because anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting are available via Board Docs, recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as it's posted on Board Docs unless I otherwise know. Turning to the first item on the agenda before I do so, allow me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda, and after they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the lines of members inviting everybody by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further, please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps to generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name and address before speaking. That's generally for the public, and if we need to get the address for the, for the minute, so please do that if members of the public speak. If anybody wishes to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself. And for items with public comment, after members have spoken, I'll allow public comment as follows. I'll ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses. Once I have a list of the commentators or comments, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. I'm gonna try to stick by that, so if, if there is a lengthy debate on anything, we'll limit it to three minutes per person. And there are no public hearings tonight that I'm aware of, so if there were, we'd accept them via Zoom, so. Let's go to the first item on the agenda, which is indeed public comments. And I see that Mr. Stone has his virtual hand raised.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, can you guys hear me, okay?
Can, yes.
Okay, welcome. Great, thank you, um, so I'm, I have a bunch of questions deriving from the results of the last meeting you had with the Board of Health. During that meeting, Ms. Thuat and other Board members made claims that really go against what other medical bodies and hospitals have said regarding the COVID pandemic, and I have some questions to try to clarify the basis for which, by which Ms. Thuat, I, I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly, please forgive me if I mispronounced it, but I'm, I'm really trying to get at the basis by which Ms. Thuat can make such claims. So I, I wish to engage in colloquial, colloquial, I wish to engage in some questions with the Board, and I, of course, will engage with you Gavin. I have some general questions, and I would also, I have a couple that would really get at the, each individual member's views.
Well, Mr. Stone, let me just interrupt you, this, this is not a meeting of the Board of Health, it's a meeting of the Select Board.
Yes, I'd like to.
So we, so understanding that, we cannot speak on behalf of the Board of Health, and we can, you know, if you have questions for, for the Board, we may need to put it on, on a future agenda depending on what those questions may be. But I'll certainly allow you to continue with your comments, but this, we don't answer for the Board of Health and certainly cannot speak on their behalf in any, in, in any fashion, but feel free to continue.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm more interested in the appointment process that led us to where we are. So my first question is, does Ms. Thuat possess a license to practice medicine in the state of Massachusetts?
I, I think that question's irrelevant to what we're here for tonight, I don't know the answer to that question, but you know, the appointment for, for her to the Board of Health was done quite a while ago, and I, I really don't want to speak about individuals, but continue.
Okay, um, during the appointment process, is the professional licensure of the Board of Health members considered when appointing members to that Board?
At the time that, in the, in the most recent months, probably over the last year, we've changed our process for appointments of individuals. I can't comment on what type of information was provided to us, I'm sure there's, there's a historic record in the minutes from back when each member of the Board of Health was appointed. But a, as of this time, we do have a questionnaire that we ask of individuals to ask of their background and interest in whatever, and you'll see some of that this evening, because we're gonna be appointing some people to some committees this evening. And there are a list of questions that we ask at this point.
But in, in the past, the lack of a medical license or a nurse registration would not be disqualifying for an appointment to that body, correct?
I think that's fair, yes.
Okay. Alright, and now, um, I guess to my next questions, so the Board of Health expressed some views that really contradicted both medical bodies of the state and federal government, in addition to our local hospital, hospital that serves our community. In particular, I would like to ask the members' personal views as to whether they agree with the Board of Health's assertion that had they done the mask mandate two weeks earlier, that such a mandate would not have made a difference. Do the Board members agree or disagree with that assertion made by the Board of Health?
Again, Mr. Stone, that is not on the agenda for this evening's discussion for the Board, for the Select Board, and I don't even know if it's a proper question to ask for us to give scientific or, you know, opinions on, on issues like that, but, but continue. But we can't debate that this evening because it's not on our agenda.
I know, I'm just asking for the members' personal views, because as you see, as you probably see on the agenda, there are also other citizens concerned and about this Board of Health's behavior, particularly the contradiction of other medical bodies. So, as, as my, and, and also during that meeting, some members also did express their views. While other members were silent and did not express a view, I was just trying to see if I could get some more clarification on the Board of Health's stance. I know there's some disagreement between some members of this Board and the members of the Board of Health, and I, I would also point out that the, the Board of Health is appointed by the Select Board, therefore, the authority of the Board of Health derives from that appointment process.
That is true, yes.
Especially if said individuals do not have a license to practice medicine nor register nurse, the only authority they have to set medical pro- policy is via that political process, is it not?
That's correct.
Okay, so when there is a concern by a Select Board, given that authority process, that concern is certainly legitimate, and given the fact that that authority derives from the Select Board, if a Board of Health member were to, say, attack the, say, a member of this Board and question his ability to be criticizing or giving an alternative point of view of that Board, isn't that member, isn't the Board of Health in fact attacking the source of their own authority?
I, you know, I, I don't wanna get into, again, as I mentioned at the outset, I don't wanna get into personalities, I don't wanna get into issues that may have occurred in the past. It's time to move forward off of those issues, but in reference to, reference to, we all need to be civil towards one another, we all need to be understanding that everybody is a volunteer, we all need to understand that we are all looking out, I believe, that it's true that we're all looking out for the best interests of our community. We can have a discussion as time goes on about how we appoint people, what the appointment process is, we, the Board is, the Select Board has had that discussion over the last several months, and we're, it's evolving and, and improving, I think, as we, as we move forward. And relative to the types of questions that you're asking about individuals and our, you know, each individual member of the Board of Selectmen's, or the Select Board's opinions towards individuals or whatever is, I think, irrelevant to what we're here to talk about.
To their opinion of individuals, I was referring to their opinion about clay. Their opinion of individuals, I was referring to their opinion about claims. I'm interested if our Select Board members think, for example, that when Emerson Hospital says, please mask up and do whatever you can to arrest the pandemic, whether it would be appropriate to not trust someone who's taken a Hippocratic oath when they ask like, hey, please, please stop, we're looking at severe capacity issues to, to question that. And then to cherry pick the evidence is certainly not the appropriate behavior of a scientist, let alone any practitioner of medicine. And I know you want us to move on, but there are a lot of citizens very concerned about our Board of Health's behavior in the middle of a pandemic and we are very like, luckily, lucky that Omicron has, has not resulted in huge hospitalizations, but we dodged a bullet and there could very well be another wave and with the current behavior of the Board of Health, not just myself, but other citizens are extremely concerned about how we're going to fare if a next another wave comes with a Board of Health that is not aligned with our local hospital. Thank you for the
Thank you, thank you, sir. Any other public comments? I don't see any hands raised electronically or otherwise, so we will move on to the Town Administrator Report. Greg. You're muted.
I know, I was taking notes, so it's a chewing gum and walking. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. I am Greg Johnson, the Town Administrator. Here is my report. Actually, I'm just going to cut to the chase about, about the finances. There's a lot in the Town Administrator's Report, but I don't want to take up too much of your time. I encourage the board and the public, of course, to please read the Town Administrator's Report. It is online. It's part of this pack. And the, the department's put a good amount of work and effort and thoughtfulness and pictures into, into the Town Administrator's Report. But I do want to talk about the budget. So I submitted the FY23 Comprehensive Budget Message to, I want to, I'm sure that I think that's the title, to the Select Board in accordance with the Town Charter that was due on January 21st. And then since then, we've gotten some more information. That's just how the timing of all this always works out. In my balanced budget, I had submitted estimates for revenue, including the state budget and then, and then of that time, the governor released his proposal for the state budget for FY23, which was less state aid, which we call local aid, than what I had projected by $203,000. That's not good news. However, on Friday, like four days ago, we had our free cash certified by the Department of Revenue. For the pub, public who's not familiar, free cash is the difference between, I'm, I'm oversimplifying, but this is difference between revenues and expenses or obligations that you have based on collections that you had from the year before. So in FY21, because we're in, we're in fiscal year 22 right now. In FY21, we were able to show how much money we had collected, but didn't have to spend. And that came out well above what my, what my projection had been. My original projection was $500,000, which was an estimate. And as it turns out, it came in over a million and a half. What that means is I was able to kind of quickly scramble on Friday, a, a proposal as to how to spend that money, which included a shift of general fund recommendations, for example, capital for $200,000 over to free cash, which if, if you just look at it, nothing else, that in a way balances out that loss from the revenue from the state budget. And I include a lot of other recommendations and I to do, to create those recommendations, I used the recommended capital improvement plan from the Capital Planning Committee. And as well, as well as sending, sending my proposal for free cash to the Select Board and the general public, I also submitted it to the Capital Planning Committee. So John Larkin is the Chair of that committee. He said he would take a look at it and, and maybe he'll be able to get a Capital Planning Committee meeting together so that they can look at it too. But again, it's, it was, it was intended to be in alignment with their recommendations. So we still have a balanced budget, which is good. A couple other tidbits of information, I got a little bit of clarity, but not the final number for our health insurance, which was significant, but not as much as we thought it was going to be, which is good. And then liability insurance, but I don't have the final numbers on that. So I'll get that in a number of weeks, perhaps. That's, it's never clear about when we'll get that. And also even the state number for the state's budget is not done. So if everyone remembers how a bill becomes a law, the executive branch gives it to the legislative branch. So now it's going to the House Ways and Means, then it goes to Senate Ways and Means, and then it goes back to Conference Committee and then back to the Governor's desk, right? So it, it sometimes it takes a long time before we find out what our final number is. But you should do your diligence and adjust your budget for the information that you have. You know, especially if it's less money. So you'll have a good problem on your hands if you find out that the final budget is more money than you thought you were going to have, but you, you got to kind of prepare for the worst. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut myself off there because I want to be able to take questions if the board has any.
Any questions from the board?
Is this just in relations to the budget or just in general on the Town Administrator's Report?
You can, you can certainly ask about the Administrator's Report, but let's stick it to the The time being.
That's why I asked.
Greg, just so I fully understand, so relative to the initial comments we're making about the, still getting feedback here. I don't know where that's coming from. And relative to the to the free cash aspect that was approved, you essentially took the free cash and loaded the amount that you had wanted to put into capital from the free cash approval, took the money that had been put in the bucket of capital and moved that to fill in the hole that otherwise would have been caused by reduced state aid and balanced it out that way. Is that basically it?
Correct. So I, and I, I looked for any other one-time capital cost. So, like I was going to pay for the new town website over the course of three years. But this, this proposal allows me to do it in one, is for, for a greater cost, but you, you know, I could do it hopefully in one, one year, right? So that's good. Downsides, you know, we did good two years ago by trying to get some capital money out of general fund, out of operating. So this sets us back. We're not going to do that. According to this proposal, the Select Board can do what you will, and then that goes to town me. But in my proposal, doesn't. And there's a couple of other things at play, like we're, you know, like I'm, I'm trying to get a, I'm trying to get high school bleachers, right? But there's a lot that, that considers, that has to come into consideration for the high school bleachers. What's the final cost going to be? What's the timing of it all going to be? When are we going to go out to bond? That's why my proposal is to bond for a certain amount of that. There's still a lot of unknowns, but this is, you know, based on a short amount of time. I want to be able to give the board something to chew on and to consider. And then this should inform, you know, including whatever other changes between now and the fact leading into the February 12th Joint Budget Review. So I'll try to have, have all this reflective of that, as well as going into detail for the rest of the budget for the public and the board. Which I'm happy to answer now, but if you, or, or we can wait until the 12th.
One other question, we got that email that came through from the state via the asset. And then you were, you know, at first it looked like, oh, this is wonderful news that we're going to get money back because they're basically, they had too much in their savings account is the way I sort of analyzed it. But from what your response suggested was that in essence, they can use that money as their own free cash to go towards their own projects. And it does not necessarily and likely will not be transferred back to the member communities. Is that true?
Yeah. Maybe I'm a pessimist, but that's, you gotta be conservative. So my, my, if it, if it's to be considered like free cash, which it is, they could do a number of things with it. I'm sure they have capital needs. Maybe they could use it similarly how I did is shifting some of their operating costs, but maybe not. So, you know, we're gonna have to wait and see.
Okay, so it was not, it was not the wonderful news that I initially thought that it was, that we would get a percentage of that back, but it could be.
Could be.
But I don't anticipate that. Any other questions from members of the board? And Greg, I think that feedback's coming from you for whatever reason. It seems like when, when you
I'm on a loner, I'm on a Chromebook. This is not, this is not my usual hot rods.
All right, that might explain it. All right. Any other questions from the board members?
I actually want to thank Greg for putting this together as quickly as you did. And, you know, the thoughtful projects. And again, I know that you were taking it from the capital planning and a list, but I really think that you've hit a lot of things that obviously need attention and I'm really hopeful that we'll be able to accomplish all of it.
No, thank you for saying that. I, a lot of credit doesn't go to me because of the, the finance team. They, they do the work to close out the books and get it certified and they still have a lot of work to do. And they learned a lot, but no, I, I, I just crunch numbers when I get the good news and then I, I give it to you guys.
It's good to know that you're only the good news, you crunch the numbers.
I told them I don't like that. No, I, I try to, I try to come in, that's how the budget's formed, right? So we, we have very conservative. And then hopefully, hopefully we have good, good things to talk about. I'm always the bad guy and then I try to give good news after that.
Nice. Armand, you said you had a question on the
Yeah, on the Town Administrator. So I was looking at the Fire Department Report. And I know, and I know that we had anticipated an increase in medical calls coming in from Maynard Crossing or Digital Way, whatever you want to call it. And it seems like it keeps going up and, and, and that's what I'd even urgent the, the urgent care opening up. So is this something that we think we should be concerned about? Because obviously, you know, more businesses are going to go on Maynard Crossing, urgent care is going to come online soon and what are the developments we may have? I don't know. Is this something that is, is something to be concerned about?
And Good question. I'll have to go with Chief about that, right? But I, I think, I think it's, I have similar concerns. I mean, we're, we're increasing liabilities, but you know, we're increased our customer base. So, and, and we're attracting non-residents, which is good. It's just a, it's just a matter of being reactive. And so that's how public services work. We have to kind of like try to meet the needs, which I think is your point. If the needs are going up, are we meeting our needs? It's difficult to fluctuate this, the, the fire department. It's, but it's a good point. So I'll take it back to Chief. I'll see, I'll see.
Yeah, speaking about the chief, it's good to hear that he's on a mend and he's, he'll be back to work soon.
He's doing 15 hours a week now. So I, I saw him for like half a second today.
Okay.
But so, so Acting Fire Chief Lawless went back to Captain Lawless. But she did a great job. For those of you who noticed, she did a great job. And, and I was, I was glad that she was able to step up for that period of time, but the baton has been back, baton is passed back to Tony Stowers.
And the fact that the residents, you know, this wasn't on the agenda, but the fact that the residents didn't even notice that there was any type of an issue is, goes to the quality of the work that she did and the, the quality of the work the fire department does is
Absolutely.
Greg, when, for graphs like the ones that Armin is referencing, especially as we move towards the budget meeting on the 12th, can we get five-year trends when you're working with department heads to pull this together? Just because 2020 was a wonky year for a lot of statistics, given the pandemic. So it'd help to see something going back a few more years just to get a, an idea if this is a long-term trend or if it's a spike up due to Maynard Crossing or some other unexplained factor.
So specific to public safety? You want that kind of like
Any pretty much any graph that instead of looking at the year-over-year, if we could see a longer history. And I'm thinking a lot of times where we see graphs like these is at the tri-board meeting in February. So going into that, if you could let the department heads know to just put a couple extra years back on there. So we're getting a five-year trend, so just a year-over-year for all the variety of statistics.
Chief.
Chief, I can, yeah, so I, I can work on that. I can't guarantee how much stats I'll be able to provide by then. And typically we just show the expenditures, right? We don't usually get into such detail about, about the, about the, I know, I know, you asked me a good question, but I mean, like for, it's, I'll just have to see what I can get in time.
Where possible.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions from the board on the Town Administrator's Report? Don't see any, so we'll move on. Acceptance of minutes, we have January 19th, 2022. Is there a motion?
I will move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of January 19th, 2022 as shown, authorizing the use of digital signatures have approved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions about those minutes, the sets of minutes from Wednesday, January 19th? Hearing none. We will vote. Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Item number four on the agenda is the appointments to a couple of committees. First one is the Sustainability Committee and the second is the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission. And I am going to turn the appointments discussion over to Jeff, if you don't mind, so that you can sort of brief us on where things have gone. This is sort of your, under your leadership, we've gotten to where we're at. And thank you very much for that. And so present to us your Sustainability Committee and the applicants or the members that you have as their, you know, initial members and we'll go from there.
Yes, I hope you, you know, the real presentation, I think, on the individual members comes from the appointment questionnaire. So I hope you get a chance to read through those, but many communities and towns have a Sustainability Committee or some similar function to do this. And in Maynard, we have a large set of sustainability goals that we've already identified. I think there's around 13 in the master plan, around 50 or so in our municipal vulnerability preparedness plan. And then as state law continues to keep up with the growing climate crisis, there are always new opportunities for grants or to update and meet, say, stretch energy codes, et cetera. And so having a body to help work on those and full credit or credits to Justin Demark in particular, and other members of, of staff have worked on many of those goals already. But having a citizen body filled with some of the great applicants that you see before you, I think will really help us in our job to prioritize contact other boards that may be affected and really drive towards some of these goals in a highly prioritized fashion so that we can do our part in making sure that we are meeting our long-run goals for environmental sustainability. And you'll notice that in our mission statement, it's connected directly to social and economic sustainability, which I believe is covered by a good number of other committees, but given the current committee landscape, environmental sustainability was one area where I, I feel we were lacking and a committee such as this could help us accomplish many of the goals that we have already set in, in those documents, the master plan, the Maynard Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, et cetera. And so I, I've been working and I just want to give a quick thanks to Kate Wheeler, who was helping me in identifying kind of prioritize the mission statement and collect what I think is a very talented initial committee, which you see the application questionnaires before you tonight. And I think that's, that's where I'll stop right there. And I think we'll be happy to take any questions. I believe most, if not all, I can't quite see all the screen of the members are here on the call and I'm sure would be happy to take any questions as well.
So I got a quick question, Jeff, because I know we have a Green Maynard committee in town. Is that correct?
Yeah.
How does, is that, are, are you going to be aligned together with Green Maynard? Are they going to be
Yes.
Separately?
Yeah. And you'll note that Orion Green, who is one of the heads of Green Maynard is going to be in the town side. I thought it was important not to co-opt completely what they're doing, but have them as an independent body. And this body, I think one spot where, where there may be actions that Green Maynard wants to take, that this body could help shift it through, let's say there's a bylaw, the bylaw committee or, or contact and reach out to other committees and do it with a bit more contact through town hall and through the government functions to help smooth out some of those actions. And it still gives Green Maynard the freedom to, to do anything that's not kind of related to what is necessary from a municipal government to set law and so that they can still have freedom to do whatever drives or educational outreach that they wish to do.
And this is, this is an official committee to the extent that the town has, you know, This is, this is an official committee to the extent that the town has, you know, sponsors the individuals that are, that are there. Green Maynard is more of a group of interested citizens that have combined to form an organization that works towards the same end goal that many of these projects will, will, will work on as well.
That, that was the reason for my question, because I was under the impression that Green Maynard was doing some of that work already, so.
Well, you have the same thing with various other committees in town where it's a similar setup, where there, you know, there is an official town committee, yet there are other organizations that work towards the same goals.
Okay, yeah, that's, Jeff answered it clearly. Thank you.
And Jeff, I just want to, I'm sorry, I was, I was reading through part of it while you were speaking, I apologize. But as far as the staff that would be helping Sustainability Committee, it would, would that be Justin? Would that be Megan? Are they going to be on their own and then just ask for help when they need it?
Yeah, so I, I, one of the initial goals will be to prioritize some of the planning goals that we already have and identified. You know, some of them have already been completed, some of them, there's partial progress, some of them still need work to do. And depending on what that prioritization looks like, we hope to minimize the, the stress on town staff that's additional. But it depends on really that prioritization for who we would need information from to move forward with some of those goals. So I, I wish I could give you a clear answer, but I think the, some of the opening kind of meetings of the committee will set what they need and that will be a dialogue with town staff since obviously staff time is not an unlimited resource and we're very aware of that.
I do think it's, go ahead, Justine, sorry.
Well, no, and, and that's the reason why. I just feel like most committees have a staff member that kind of is assigned. And I just want to make sure, and it sounds obviously like you know this and, and I'm sure that the new committee members will know it also. But that it is that this, the staff is stretched very thin. So, you know, it just feels, it almost feels like depending on what, they won't have one central person to go to. It sounds like they're going to be going to different ones depending on what they, they need. Is that?
We, yeah, we will identify that initial prioritization list of, of what major, you know, kind of projects are first thrust. We don't want to take on everything all at the same time. So depending on how those initial conversations go, then we'll have to identify that. And we will work with, with Greg and, and Justin and Megan or whichever staff member is appropriate to, to figure out what the best path is forward and how the committee can put in the time versus staff time to, to make sure that we're achieving our goals in a way that is respectful of the resources that, that we have, which, as I said before, staff time is one of those resources that we know that we have to be using in a sustainable fashion, let's say that.
No pun intended, I guess.
No pun intended.
No, no pun intended. That was not, that was, yeah, that was, that's the truth.
The, is that it, Justine?
I just, well, one other question is, is when, when you're talking about it, you're, you're talking we a lot and you're not, are we going to also appoint you as a liaison to the committee? Is that something that will come up after we create a committee? And my other question is, when we move to approve the charge, which is the mission, does that itself created or do we have to move to create a committee and then move to approve the charge? So I was just double checking.
On the first one, I, my, I was hoping to be liaison to the committee, just as we have liaison structure for the others. So I, and I, I hope to be involved and help them, you know, get started up along the way and identify and work with those projects. So I plan to be actively involved, not as a member, but certainly as a liaison and report back to this board and back and forth, depending on what the particular issues are. For the second question, I, I'm not quite sure. Yeah, I'm going to default to Greg on that one for the.
Yeah, so the appointing authority should be the one to do the charge initially. And then after, after, maybe the, maybe the body or public can, can recommend an alteration to that charge or whatever you have. But a simple mission statement similar to a charge, I think that's what, I think that's what you presented and I think that's sound. Right, so the board should, should motion to approve the charge. Yeah.
Do we, do we need to motion to, to actually create a committee first or no?
You, you, no, you, you create the committee through the charge and the requirements.
Okay.
And, and Jeff is there? I'm sure there is a reason for the term limits. They're spread out like one year, two years, three years. There a reason behind, for reason for that?
That's just the standard way we, we do committees, so not everyone is cycling off at the same time. Just the standard practice.
Got it.
My comment is more of an observation for the members once they are appointed and a way to sort of perhaps get started with even the thought process of where to go. One of our more successful efforts, my term on the board dating back was when we were initially appointed as a green community. And part of the Green Communities Act has some specific guidelines upon which communities must follow in order to be continually, to be considered a green community. Some of which we've kept up with, others we haven't been as successful. But for example, you know, there's, there's supposed to be a a certain percentage of your municipal vehicles are supposed to be green by a certain period of time. I don't know if we've kept up with that, but quite frankly, I don't know of other communities that are in the Green Communities Act have kept up with that either, for various reasons. I know that there was some concern from public, from public safety vehicles that they may not have the, the speed capacity necessary and the, you know, the, the rate of acceleration or, you know, I remember having those discussions, but that was when electric vehicles were brand new to, to where we were. But anyway, just that point of there, there is a place to start, just to get an idea. I think also, another thought that I had as we, as we, as I was reviewing all of this stuff is I'm very excited about alternative energy and opportunities and everything else. And you know that within the last few years, we've had some discussion municipally as well as with the schools about solar capacity and solar opportunities, which I think there will be an announcement on something along those lines and sometime in the near future of an opportunity that may exist. But those are the types of things that I hope this committee can sort of dig their heels in on and see where there are other opportunities and municipal property that we might be able to utilize, any type of thing like that that can help us to, to create sustainability down the road from an energy perspective. And finally, the issue of, where was I going with my last point? I'm going to pull a Jermaine Wiggins and say, I forget, but I do, I forget. So, never mind.
Well, I, and I completely agree with your last point and that's very important and definitely something that the committee will look like. But I look at, and in addition to that, your, your point about the electric vehicles and how some of those arguments are a few years old now, that this is a rapidly changing field and to have a group like this help keep on top of both the changing technology and the policies and opportunities coming out of state law and federal law is important to have so that we can keep on top of, you know, grant right and opportunities and other, other things that come up that we want to be able to take advantage of in a time-efficient manner.
Okay. So having said that, I don't think we need to interview each of the candidates that have been presented. And we have their, their qualifications per se in front of us from their application forms. And so I think I'm good to go with the appointments as they've been presented and would welcome motions for each.
Do, oh, I see.
So I will first move to approve the charge of the Sustainability Committee as presented.
Second.
Okay, that motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or question on the mission as it was presented to us? Seeing none or hearing none, we will vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris? Thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay, and I am a yes as well. So now we can move on to, to the appointments.
Are you, are we going to do motions for each appointment or just all?
As it's written on the, as it's written on the agenda, on our agenda, we can do them each individually. Because remember, each one, some of them have different terms and everything else.
Right, right, right.
I will move to appoint Kate Wheeler to the Sustainability Committee, term June 30th, 2025, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none or hearing none, we'll vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
I will move to appoint Sally Warner to the Sustainability Committee, term ending July, June 30th, 2025, of authorized use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am a yes.
I will move to appoint Priscilla Ryder to the Sustainability Committee, term ending June 30th, 2025, authorized use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on that appointment? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
I'll move to appoint Lisa, and forgive me if I'm pronouncing her wrong, Vernegard, to the Sustainability Committee, term ending June 30th, 2024, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. And Lisa, did we pronounce your name right? Berngard?
No, Vernegard.
Vernegard.
I think.
Is she on? I guess not.
I think we have the other six, yes.
Okay. So where were we? We will go to vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
I'll move to appoint Xana Cranmer to the Sustainability Committee, term ending June 30th, 2024, authorized use of digital signatures if approved.
Questions or comments? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
I'll move to approve, appoint Meg Subquist-Klein to the Sustainability Committee, term ending June 30th, 2023, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Hey, I'll give that to Justine. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going backwards. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. One more.
And I will move to appoint Orion Green to the Sustainability Committee, term, term ending June 30th, 2023, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
That goes to Chris. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a, I am a yes as well. Thank you all for volunteering and stepping up, Jeff. Go right ahead.
Can we just make a quick note about, for the new members for appointments, for the swearing in with the town clerk at town hall? So.
That's exactly where I was going.
I'm sorry.
Okay. No, no problem at all. Thank you. And yes, thank you all for stepping up and everybody needs to be sworn in, as Jeff just said. Very simple process, just contact the, the town, the town clerk's office and Becky should have your appointment slips in the morning. So thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Part B of the appointments is an appointment to the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission. We have a volunteer for that committee. And we have a confirmation of support of the nomination or the appointment from Elijah Tucker. And I think this will take a, a deep dive into a discussion is to find out the, the interests that our, that our deputy chief has in this. I'm joking, of course. That we, we are appointing the deputy police chief to the Disabilities Act Commission. So thank you for joining us, deputy chief. And you're muted. And so you'll be taking on the responsibility, basically, when, when Elijah was here a few weeks back, one of the, we learned that, that there is an opportunity for a town employee to be on and there are other opportunities there. Did, did you fit into that category or was there another reason that you are coming before us?
No, you're right, David. That's the category I fitted to. I saw the need for, for the town employee. You know, they've been kind of looking for someone for, for a little bit of time there, so I, there's a good opportunity to jump in. I've been fortunate enough to kind of work with them in the past, collaborate with them on certain issues and looking forward to kind of moving that forward as we go, as we go along here.
Thanks. And the chief does, the chief doesn't have a problem with you sitting on this committee?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
It streamlines a lot of things. Instead of playing, going through, they can go right to the deputy chief. So it'll definitely assist with that. If there's any issues, we can take care of it before they become bigger issues.
Yep. They've actually opened up a few eyes with their work and they've done some good stuff. And they've, they've become pretty active, so it's, it's good to see them, you know, raising their voices about issues that have concern, so that's good. So is there a motion?
Sure. Move to appoint Deputy Police Chief Christopher Triano to the American with Disabilities Act Commission, with a term ending June 30th, 2024, and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thanks, Chris.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
You appreciate it.
All right, item number five is correspondences. To accept correspondence, we have a number of them this evening. Is there a motion?
I just lost it. I will move to accept and approve correspondences A through O as shown.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions on any of the correspondence? Or comments on any of the correspondence? I'm looking through, nobody, okay? So we'll vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Item number six is the consent agenda, which is a request, an annual request that we've had now for a number of years for the use of town on land over near the golf course for maple sugaring. And so is there any questions or comments from the board? And is somebody here to speak on that?
I didn't see George.
No, it's okay. Not necessary. Because it is, it's just a renewal and we do it every year. I just don't want to, if somebody's here, I don't want to miss them. So I'll take a motion.
Sure. Move to approve the consent agenda items as, as presented and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, next item, number seven, amending the marijuana retail license. Green Star Herbals, Inc., doing business as RISE. I think this arises out of the, basically the large picture sale of the organization to a larger organization by the name of RISE. And I think the, the signs have changed already, if I'm not mistaken, downtown. And so basically, this is just a form. And so basically, this is just a formality to, to move us forward so that they have the approval necessary. Greg or Megan, do you have anything to say on this, other than what I've just summarized?
That's, that's generally correct. And I have to give a lot of credit to Becky for helping us through. It's very similar to the alcohol, you know, licensing, but not, not entirely. And working with state is not as easy, because the Cannabis Control Commission, similar to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, is still kind of working through their own sort of protocols and, and working with the towns and whatnot. Do have Mr. Silverman joining us. He's the applicant, so to speak. And so if the board has any questions, but you're right, mostly it is a change of business title.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I, I actually had a couple of questions, first being, do we need to amend the host community agreement as well? Okay, so that'll be, that'll be coming also.
I'm sorry, Chromebook sting.
Okay.
If, um, I have that in there as a motion as well, but I don't, I don't have it drawn up yet. But I, I suspected that I need to reflect in the host community agreement, an amendment to say that it's not called Green Star anymore.
Okay, I, and again, I, sorry, I didn't see that part. I knew, I didn't see it in the public comment, but I.
Yeah, it's on the bottom, the last sentence, yeah.
Ah, sorry.
And so my question for Mr. Silverman, so I was looking, and your company is based out of Chicago?
Yeah, but, so just to be clear, I'm the attorney for Green Star Herbals. The owner is a company called GTI, based out of Chicago. They're a national operator that's had a great deal of success using the DBA Rise. And so, yeah, but you're correct, that, that owner of Green Star is in fact in Chicago.
Okay, and there, are they, I know that one thing that we really appreciate, and I just wanted to, to throw this out there, is that we really did appreciate kind of the, the smaller town feel of, of having them involved in the community. And we just hope that even though they're a bigger organization, that they're looking to be good business partners with us as well.
That is undoubtedly a part of their business plan.
And, and I know that Tom is still staying on board, so that, that's going to make a difference, having him locally here still.
Correct.
Great.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we can vote, we can make a motion.
I'll move to amend the application from Green Star Herbals, Inc., doing business as Rise at 24 Main Street, Maynard, in reference to the application approved by the Cannabis Control Commission on December 14th, 2021, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none will vote. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Silverman.
There's a second motion.
Yeah, I thought Greg said that that one was.
No, it wasn't there. It's, it just, because it's going to be procedural, we'll have to change the host community agreement to reflect. It's kind of like side letter, like you need to add amendment to the original agreement.
So do you want us to vote on that, or do you want us to wait until it's, it's?
So that's up to you. It's, no, that's a good point. You don't have to vote this evening, I, in anticipation of it being done.
Yeah, there's. Are there any substantive changes coming, or no?
No, it should just be the name.
It's just a name change, so then let's vote. Take something off.
I'll move to approve amendments to the host community agreement with Green Star to reflect the change in business name.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none will vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well.
So Greg, can you just make sure you send that to us when it's, when it's altered, when it's changed?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, we're moving on to item number eight, which is the MAPC technical assistance issue with the Powder Mill Corridor study. Greg, do you want to take this, or should we turn it to Megan?
Uh, give credit where credit's due. Pass it to Megan.
Well, it's, it's really Bill, so I'm.
Pass it around the board.
Bill Namzer is here to speak on this.
Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, thank you. Um, well, we've completed the first, what we're calling Phase One of the Powder Mill Corridor Study. Um, and if you recall, in general, it was sort of an approach to take a, a long-term sustainable view of that corridor for stretching from Waltham Street into High Street, Napton. Um, we partnered with the town of Acton on that study and on the grant. And that has been completed. And a matter of fact, in a couple of weeks, I think on the 22nd, MAPC is going to present their findings. In anticipation of what the report will recommend and reveal, we are going to request a second technical assistance grant to further, really three specific parts of the study that we were going to need to move forward in the future. And that would be a creation study of a zoning district that was an overlay district, and that I anticipate would take a year to two years. We were, we would continue the outreach that we began with the stakeholders and trying, trying to ensure that everybody's part of the process in designing this new zoning district. Secondly, as you've heard a lot of people discuss about reactivating the riverfront, particularly along the Powder Mill Corridor. And so this grant is intended to help us research and really create what I'm calling templates that could possibly.
The Batman's calling.
That's your wife calling you, you're late.
And, um, yeah, service templates for when a, a new project comes in, this is what we would expect along the waterfront. And we know that there's going to be a number of different possibilities. Some, in some circumstances, there may be no improvements that are possible at all. It's just a question of preservation and cleaning out invasive species or other cases. So that's the second part of the grant. The third is a streetscape improvement plan. You know, I, when we talk about complete streets and stuff, it's kind of, I, I, again, I always think of it as more of a philosophy than it's specific design. But we have limited spaces in some areas. We do have a possibility where we can, should a project come in, we can utilize part of that project to add pedestrian or bicyclist friendly features of some sort. So we wanted to develop and have MAPC help us develop some templates. So the, the idea in the end is this, we don't want to have an unnecessary delay with a developer or a potential investor in the area when we have to decide, well, we would like, what do we want to do for the, the streetscape? What do we want to do for the riverfront reclamation or the, or the access? And, um, so we think that that's kind of a way to ensure there's a cohesiveness and consistency to what comes down the Pike Forest. And with the overlay zoning district, we would, uh, you know, that would be something we want to work with the community quite, community quite a bit with, but we see it kind of similar as, like the downtown overlay district where it sits on top of it. It'll probably be an optional thing, but we'll have to see which way it goes. My colleagues in Acton would like to be part of this again, and the Acton Select Board did sign a letter of support, which, which you'll have as well in there. And that's what I'm requesting from the Select Board. Pretty much that's it. I, I, you know, we may not get it, but we've been doing pretty good grants in general, so. And it will be the next chapter in having a uniform plan for Powder Mill Corridor that really addresses the shape that it's going to take, and we can design it for the best, to meet the best needs of the community.
Hey, Bill, I got a question. It's probably not directly related to this grant, per se, because it's more probably related to what the planning board's thinking might be on an overlay district. Would, would you envision that the overlay district would only be on the riverside of Powder Mill?
Well, no, I wouldn't. I would think that it would. Well, depending on the features that, that it promotes, but in general, I would, I would think adjacent to Powder Mill Road itself would be with, depending on, you know, the certain geographic features. So maybe, you know, on the riverside, I would say, yeah, probably would go all the way to the river. On the other hand, um, you know, we would want to probably include some other tracts of land, perhaps. It might be work well with Beijing Royals, in fact, I don't know yet. So I kind of see it as, as a, it's, it's going to be fluid, and it's, you know, the, the key will be ensuring that the majority of people, whatever, you get everybody, not, not everybody's going to be happy. But in general, if we can get stakeholder consensus that, that what this project can offer the community, you know, i- i- is worthwhile, we think it would be a, a very good tool for the town to move us into the next stage. And really, the, 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 we had very active and robust turnout from our outreach meetings in Phase One. And unfortunately, we didn't get to do any in person, you know, it was right when COVID came out. But we still did. Maybe we did better because, I don't know. But, um, so we see that same sort of engagement as critical to making this a plan that m- most people will like, I hope.
And essentially, it essentially assists us in creating a blueprint, so that when we begin to develop, we already know, and the key then is sticking to the plan.
Yeah, with, I mean, there's going to have to be a, a level of flexibility. So for example, as I pointed out, maybe, you know, when we're talking about streetscape plans, and, um, so perhaps in one area, there is very little right of way, but there's plenty of private property that's there, and a project comes in on the private property, maybe it makes sense. Okay, here's what would work in this situation. And we have it, let's say, five or six templates or whatever, ready to go. So we say this works here. The same, the same with the riverfront activation. Some stuff is never going to be, you know, it's not, it's strictly the value of the, the river activation and that portion may just be preserving it and improving it as total preservation, hands off. But your, your mitigation for your project or whatever, you know, you're working on would be, okay, your job is to remove the invasives from this, make sure it's, you know, a natural. On the other hand, there may be a part where there's a more active use that we could see for that piece of the riverfront. And I think that not having to, when, when an application does come in, not having to say, oh, what do we want to do with this? What do we, well, here's what we have. So we know that the streetscape, here's basically what we want. It's going to have to be flexible enough to, you know, for this. And the same would be said for the riverfront, because, you know, maybe an area that's, we can't touch at all. Maybe one that's great for kayak launch, or maybe good for an observation post, whatever the case may be. The, the big, you know, remember, if, if you all remember, when we started this initiative, my concern was that we have very fragmented zoning along that corridor. And if everybody did what they may be entitled to do on that land, as it is now, if we didn't touch it, if we just said, no, we don't want to bother with it, we're going to, we'll take what comes, it could really exacerbate the, the dysfunction of the area. If we do it the right way, I think we have a very good chance of creating really, not just a cohesive project, but we, we have the possibility of improving assets for the communities surrounding the area. So for example, if, if I had, you know, and a lot of people, there's these really nice neighborhoods right back there, but I'm not sure that they would want to have their kid go ride down Powder Mill Road right now. I don't, on a bike, I don't know if that would be something, not. So I, I, I'm thinking that we can make this a better community for everybody. It's going to take time, and, and these kind of things do. And maybe I'll never even see this thing go, you know, I don't know, but it will be working that way. And I hope that it would improve everybody's quality of life, give the town a, a, really a cohesive plan that we can work towards a sustainable economic future. And, you know, we're, sustainable's a good word tonight, and I think we could do it.
Great, thank you. So is there any other questions, or we can take a motion?
I had, I just have one question about, as far as the, the proposal to create an overlay district, but then not necessarily apply it, when, i- is that my understanding?
No, I, I, I did say that it's a possibility of, of optional. And the reason I said that is because, you know, we have one. Let me back up. In my career, I have never encountered an optional overlay district until the downtown overlay district. And I can, if I was starting, you know, from square one, it would not be optional. And, and to be honest with you, the downtown overlay district, maybe something that the planning board decides, you know, enough. We don't want, we wouldn't want development that would be, the underlying district would allow. At this point in the process, though, when we're creating a new district, we're affecting so many stakeholders with different interests. Um, I'm, till I have all the details, I don't say that I would make a definitive statement one way or the other. If, you know, I mean, if it turns out that we just have certain areas, and it's, it's critical that, that we have a mandatory overlay, that may be what we got. But at this point, I would say it's fluid. And, um, you know, my concern is that we have so such a diverse, and again, because of the zoning is fragmented, it makes it worse, you know, we, we, we have to move cautiously, but at one point, we'll have to make decisions and see what's best for the majority of the people. But that's a great point, Justine, and, and, and I'm not going to commit to that. I'm not going to say that at this point. Um, I would imagine there will be a recommendation in any overlay district that comes in. And as I've told you, in my career, the whole point of an overlay district is to shape a specific geographical area a certain way. So for example, the NBOD, which is Major Crossing, I mean, I'm sure you all know, that's not optional. Now, and that wasn't optional for a certain, you know, because you, you want to ensure what you got. On the other hand, when the downtown overlay district was, was created, it was before my time there. But looking on, back on the records of it and what happened, my guess is some people were apprehensive, but hey, I don't necessarily want to be committed to having to follow this particular, you know, criteria. Now, would we want to see a retail or a, a fast food there with a ginormous parking lot in front of Main Street? You know, that, that was just a sea of asphalt? I don't think we would. Um, so there's considerations there, and, and I wouldn't be surprised if the planning board ultimately decides to move that direction to eliminate the option. So that's a long answer, but it's an important question. And by the way, it's a great question, because the, the overlay, like I said, the overlay district is a, it, it's the key to a lot of things. It makes it easier, but you have to be clear about what you're achieving, until we can, or what you're trying to achieve. And until we can really communicate that to the, you know, stakeholders, it's hard. So I, I reserve that right. I may not, you know, I don't know. So I, I reserve that right. I may not, you know, I don't know.
Well, that was, that's, and my, my other question, I'm, I'm sorry is, but does it happen often that we change zoning with actual residential people in that zoning?
I'm just sorry.
Do we change zoning often to, that would affect this many people? I mean, like I know the N B O D, that basically affected, you know what I'm saying? So like, this would be affecting that whole corridor. Do we?
Sure, sure.
Have we done something like that before?
Yeah, great question, great question. In that area, in that area, as well as a couple of other areas throughout town, we have not changed the zoning very often in residential areas. And the result of that is that the zoning code evolves and the communities get left behind. Now, what does that mean and why do we care? Well, in, we have our zoning board of appeals, which, you know, is one of my other charges, which you guys have probably sat in, you probably wonder, hey, what, what is this? These guys have another special permit, they have another variance, they have all this. And the reason is because the zoning has really passed them by and they want their particular in a lot or home, they want specific features that aren't available in that zoning anymore. So what I'm saying there is that we've antiquated zoning in a lot of our community, in a lot of our neighborhoods. And so for example, what I mean by that is we may have a smaller lot than the people, you know, want because they want a porch or they want a garage or whatever the case may be. Along Powder Mill, we're the same thing because it's all fragmented. So the answer is no, we don't do a lot of zoning changes. It's not something, it's a very, it's something you approach in, in my experience, very cautiously. And the most important thing, I think, is to be clear and, and make sure people understand what you're trying to achieve with the zoning change, if you're going to do it. There's been some very contentious ones, you know, in, in history, oh my God, you go planning schools. You hear about all these, these, uh, these cases and stuff like that, but, and I've done a fair amount of it, but not that much. I generally end up going with the overlay route. And the reason is because it's simpler to carve out a portion of it. You know, so if we decided, if the community said, hey, look, we don't think this would help us. So let's just, let's just develop an overlay district that touches the, you know, the, the, the specific, maybe this is a road, maybe it's the, the river, whatever it may be, then that's what we do. Okay. But on the other hand, if everybody, i- i- if all of a sudden, not everybody, the majority of people in, in residential neighborhoods said, gee whiz, I would really like to have a porch on my house. But my zoning, where I am right now, has passed me by, these lots are too small and the zoning code has evolved and consequently, I can't do anything to my house I want to do. I can't put a porch on, I can't, you know, go up another floor, whatever the case may be. So that, that's, that's the, this is the most nuanced part and, and I'm going to, you know, this, this initiative has been going for an awful long time. Well, the, the, it's been germinated for a long time. And the reason is, I want to build consensus in the community, but also I want to build consensus from the community leadership. I need it all around. If, if I don't have it, it's, and it doesn't matter if it's a select board or if it's the planning board or FinCom or whoever it is. In general, you know, you want to take the time to make sure what you're doing is conveyed and, and the objective is clear.
All right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you to sleep.
Any other questions from the board? If none, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the endorsement letter for the technical assistance from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, M A P C, for phase two of the Powder Mill Corridor Study in partnership with the Town of Acton as presented, authorize use of digital signature for proof.
Give that to Chris. Any other comments?
Thanks, Bill.
Was there a comment?
Thanks.
I just said, thanks, Bill.
Okay. Hearing none. Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, everybody. And please remember, please remember, we have a joint meeting on the 22nd, February 22nd. And it's going to be a nice presentation and I hope all our listeners and viewers and everybody can attend this because it should be really interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. Item number nine is public works section. First is a presentation on the MS four stormwater enterprise. I see Justin is here, Wayne is here. Who, who are you going to have do the presentation, Wayne?
Hi David, it's Justin DiMarco, DPW Director. So actually Sarah Nelvin is
Oh, hi Sarah.
Project lead for MS four team through VHB. Wayne is also part of our MS four as well as myself and actually Julie, our conservation agent is part of that team as well. So it is that time of year where we present our MS four overview and public education process. And as the board may or may not know, it is a permit process that we're progressively moving forward with. And every year it comes with different constraints and different restrictions and it progressively grows in size and complexity. So this year, Sarah is going to give you a brief overview of our MS four processes, where we're at, what we're doing. And we're going to present to the board some potential offerings or options for revenue sources in the future for sustainability. Now I'm definitely hopping on that train for sustainable financial backing to support MS four for the foreseeable future. So after that, Sarah, do you want permission? Megan usually gives permission or would you prefer Megan run the phone?
Um, no, I'd love to run it. I think I have permission actually. Let me try. How's that?
Yep.
Can everyone see my screen?
Take it away.
Looks great.
All right. Okay. Sorry, when I did that, all my windows on my screen shifted. So just give me a second. Okay. All right. So yes, as Justin said, I'm Sarah Nelvin. I am a water resources scientist and the MS four project manager at VHB with Wayne. And I assist Maynard with all things MS four compliance. And MS four, if you don't know, is the program under which the town's stormwater system is regulated. Also, you may have seen me around town or seen my name around town. I'm, I'm actually wondering, are you, you're seeing my main screen, right? Just checking.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Like the cover slide. Yes.
No, it's good, Sarah. We're good.
Correct.
Okay, sounds good. I was like, wait a second. I just doesn't look like it does on Teams, which is what I'm used to. Yeah. Anyway, you might've seen me around town or seen my name around town because I, this fall, I was in town hall a lot, serving as interim conservation agent. While the town was looking for a new conservation agent. But today I'll focus on the MS four program and like Justin said, give you an overview, a little overview and then talk mostly, you know, about, or talk about why we, why Justin has asked to increase the MS four program budget this year, which is in part to initiate a stormwater enterprise or utility fund feasibility study. So just to give you some background on the MS four program. So the MS four permit is a federally issued permit under the Clean Water Act. So that means it's administered by the U S Environmental Protection Agency. And it regulates owners of storm sewer systems. So owners like the town of Maynard. And it basically makes sure that stormwater discharged to these systems that ultimately gets to water bodies is, is not containing excess pollution. And if you're curious, MS four stands for municipal separate storm sewer system, as you can see on, on the front page of Maynard's permit. So it's basically everything from the catch basins and outfalls you see in these photos to the pipes in between. Everything that conveys stormwater is, is part of the MS four. And like I said, it's, it's a regulation under the Clean Water Act. You may have heard of the Clean Water Act. Its purpose is to protect water quality of lakes and streams and, and other waters of the U S. It was passed in the seventies back when Americans, America's water bodies were absolutely disgusting. They were full of industrial waste and raw sewage and untreated stormwater runoff. Some rivers, as you can see in the photo, were so polluted, they even caught on fire. But it's really a nice environmental success story that since the Clean Water Act was passed in the seventies, water quality has gotten much better. And places we would have never dreamed of swimming or even boating have become destinations. A prime example is the Charles River, which used to be known for its dirty water, back when that album came out in nineteen sixty-five. So also endangered species that were really suffering have rebounded. Drinking water sources that were threatened have become cleaner. Flooding issues are being addressed. So the Clean Water Act has done a lot of good. And these improvements have happened across the country, but they've also happened right here in Maynard. So just to give you a few examples of how the Clean Water Act and specifically the MS four permit have benefited Maynard. These are just a few of many. Oops, went too fast. But the Asabet River water quality has improved dramatically. You can see from this graph that total phosphorus, which is a pollutant, has gone way down since the nineties. We've also improved our asset management. So basically we've gotten much better at understanding the location and the locations and condition of storm sewer components. This has led to fewer system failures and emergency maintenance needs. Because in addition to asset management, the MS four permit requires that we inspect and maintain these assets on a regular basis. And one more example, MS four requirements, even though they focus on water quality, they lead to stormwater treatment, which has improved and reduced flooding issues. But, and you probably knew there was a buck coming, there's still more improvement that's necessary. So for example, although we like to think that the Clean Water Act, you know, prevented all raw sewage from ever entering our waterways. We've actually found through MS four permit requirements that that's unfortunately not true. Disclaimer, this photo was not taken in Maynard. But there, we have found from screening outfalls in Maynard that there is evidence that sewage is still getting into the Asabet through the storm sewer system. And that's basically because pipes that shouldn't be connected are connected, like the storm sewer system to the sanitary sewer system. So that's just, just one example of improvements that are definitely still needed. But because EPA knows this, every time a new permit comes out, which is supposed to be every five years, sometimes a little longer. But every time it comes out, the regulations just get more and more stringent, which obviously means that costs for the town keep going up and up to comply with these regulations. And unfortunately, there's not really a long-term funding mechanism that EPA or, or the Massachusetts D E P has created to help municipalities comply with these increasing requirements. So it really falls on the regulated, like the town, to figure out how to fund compliance. And I will say that ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, is actually a very exciting new funding mechanism for this work. But it's just a one-time funding mechanism. It's not a sustainable, now I'm using the word, long-term solution. So that's where Stormwater Enterprise funds could really help. They're also known as stormwater utilities. So a stormwater enterprise fund, it's basically a municipal fund dedicated to only stormwater work. So if Maynard had this, stormwater work wouldn't need to be funded through the general fund each year like it is now. And that money could get reabsorbed into the budget. The fund would be created through property owners paying a fee essentially. And there's a lot of different ways that that fee could be determined. But the idea is that the fee each property owner pays is proportionate to their use of the storm sewer system. So for example, if, you know, Market Basket would pay a much larger fee than a residential property because they have more pavement and therefore they're discharging more stormwater into the storm sewer system. And that's why it's called a fee and not a tax. It's a fee for a service that Maynard property owners are using, no different than drinking water or sewer. And stormwater enterprise funds have many benefits. So first of all, it would ensure that Maynard could comply, afford to comply with the MS four permit, which like I said, keeps getting more and more stringent. And, you know, that would prevent things like EPA fines, consent decrees, lawsuits. These things really do happen. VHB has clients who are there helping because they're under consent decrees. And that would cost the town a lot of money. So they're not just a theoretical possibility. We really do want to keep the town in compliance with this permit. But it's also not just about compliance. You know, these funds can be used for things besides MS four compliance, things like street sweeping, leaf litter pickup, pet waste management, you know, flood insurance updates, software like G I S subscriptions, new staff. These are things that where the town would really see the results. Residents would see the results. And, and these are other things that are paid for currently out of the general fund. And just to give you some contacts, context, Massachusetts has seen a big increase in implementation of stormwater enterprise funds recently, especially since the latest permit came out in twenty sixteen because it had a lot of requirements. And these aren't just big cities. Milis, for example, which I understand is quite comparable to Maynard, implemented an enterprise fund in twenty eighteen. And for the communities that implement these funds, the average, average revenue is one million dollars a year. So even if we charged a very low fee and we were on the lower end of revenue, like Pepperell there, it looks like we'd still have a revenue stream that would match or exceed our current MS four budget. But this all comes back to a feasibility study. Basically, we, we need to do a feasibility study to cover, to be, in, before we can implement something like this. So this would cover basically everything from defining what we even need to raise money for, what activities we need revenue for, all the way to drafting the bylaw and regulations that would establish this, this fund. So that's one of the main reasons that Justin's asked to increase the MS four budget this year because under our current budget, a feasibility study is just not possible. We've, we've had to focus the funds on making sure the town is in compliance with the MS four permit. But to sum things up, you know, Maynard's got to comply with the MS four permit. And that's a good thing for the town. It has a lot of benefits, but requirements are constantly becoming more stringent and more costly. And there's no long-term funding mechanism. So a stormwater enterprise fund could be a really good long-term solution. And a fiscal year twenty-three budget increase would allow us to initiate a feasibility study for that, for that solution. So could really be worth the investment. So that's all I've got. Feel free to ask any questions to me or Justin and thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. I've got a quick question, but it's directed to Greg. In the current budget proposal that we will see in a couple of weeks, is this already included in the proposed budget?
Yes.
Yeah, Greg, I can answer that as well. Yeah. So David, the, the DPW is presenting this more of a support mechanism. There's no motion in front of the board, as you know. This is a support of the TA-supported budget. So just to make sure that you're aware that this is a process that will help our MS four not only go into compliance within our permanent year, but to help us move forward with solving the revenue gap that will continue to haunt us in the foreseeable future.
Yeah. Okay. So my reaction would be, you know, obviously a study would be required and I would think would be somewhat extensive to, to get there, but I'm always concerned when there's an indication of increased fees or whatever that will impact the cost of living in, in the community, especially when it's unregulated, as this really is. Whereas, you know, your tax, your, your property tax at least has some type of cap on it. People could suddenly be hit with God knows what, and there really wouldn't be any control other than the five members of the select board that would decide how somebody's rate would be increased the following year. And that gets away, I think, from the control that the taxpayer has, other than their ballot on, on the cost of living. So that's a concern because, you know, people are worried about their pocketbook. But I understand the other side relative to it's coming out of our budget as it is. But, and therefore things that people are interested in, such as education and public safety and the library and whatever is impacted because we have to expend money towards this other process. So I'll be interested in seeing what the study comes up with. But I have that, and, and I'll use the phrase, I'll have that cynicism, but I think it's a healthy cynicism relative to how, at the end of the day, it, it all fits into the big picture.
Thing to, to remember also is that, you know, as you're being on the Budget Subcommittee for the years that I have been, one of the first things unfortunately that gets cut almost every year is the full funding of the MS four permit. So, you know, unfortunately, I, it is, you know, I understand it's not a tax, it is another fee that the Town of Maynard residents will have to pay. But at the same time, and again, we'll see this with a feasibility study, but what the town will have to pay if we keep kind of chipping away and not actually fulfilling our obligations and, and there's a problem, is probably going to far outweigh that. And then that will really affect our budget and every other budget in town.
Yeah, that, that was something I was just going to mention to Justine is it's the cost of waiting. It's, you always have to look at it and figure that out, what, what is that cost of waiting and what happens? And when, when, you know, the, the old adage says you hits the fan and then what, you know? So I think it's best to invest now, so we don't avoid any future, you know, catastrophes, basically.
It hits the river in this case, Armand. On slide eight, that annual residential rate comparing the different towns, what, what is that a rate per? Is that, you, you described several different possible structures is on the area of the property or is it previous service for that one? How does that particular?
Sorry, which slide are you talking about?
One with all the towns in the
Eight out of ten.
Stormwater, yeah, the revenue.
Got it. And sorry, what was your, your question was, oh, what is?
The bottom axis, the x-axis, what's that annual residential rate per?
Per, I think per year.
Pepperell sixty?
Per year.
Sixty to Pepperell pays sixty dollars per year per home or resident?
Per home, per home. So it's, it's pretty, that, yeah, that is something, I mean, and this is something we could see in a feasibility study, but you can raise significant revenue with pretty small fees. So, you know, just like as a thought experiment, if Maynard has about four thousand homes and there's, you're paying and you charge a forty dollar fee per year, that's already a hundred sixty thousand dollars, which is double the current MS four budget. So, you know, and that's forty dollars a year. So I don't know how a resident would feel about that. It's still a fee. But yeah, these are, these are fees per year. So it's, it's not anything crazy.
That quick math was exactly what I was asking about. So appreciate that.
Justin, go ahead.
Yeah, David, I, I want to address a couple of comments. So we, the beauty with the enterprise fund is we also have the ability to kind of speak to your question, David, is we can create policy, financial policy, that doesn't just give the Board of Selectmen the only vote for fee setting for this user situation. So technically, right now, the enterprise funds for water and sewer, our current policy, allow the water and sewer commissioners to adjust the rates and approve it. But we could always implement more constringent financial policies that require the FinCom's approval, plus the select board's approval and sub-finance, so that there is not just a five-person board making this decision. You may not see, depending on the rate structure, so Jeff brings up a point of a flat rate fee. A flat rate fee, I'm not sure is actually appropriate for the Town of Maynard. I would like to see a more proportionate fee because if we're talking about hitting everybody's wallet, I would like to see the biggest abusers or users pay the larger fee, where some of our seniors that have a one-card driveway pay something, you know, at a ten-dollar fee compared to Maynard Crossing paying hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the feasibility study will definitely call that out and we can absolutely look at that proportionate aspect and kind of look at it in that manner. But we can also set up policy, you know, we may not call that out in the feasibility study, but we could definitely suggest that that's explored through the TA's office and the select board. So if there's a little bit more restrictive mechanisms that you want to put in place, that can absolutely be explored. And to Justine's point, MS four obviously gets cut, it gets put in the giant general budget. And it's one of those things where are we going to fire somebody or are we going to potentially reduce in expenditure? The reason that the DPW is putting this forth now to the select board, not necessarily for adoption, but more just to kind of put it in your mind, is as the permit starts to increase, there is actionable items that need to start to take place. And when I say actionable items, we are past the investigatory aspect and we're talking about remediation of failure in infrastructure that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars without a financial mechanism in place. So all of a sudden, we're talking about water, sewer, facilities, root failures. Now we're throwing into the capital improvement situation, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars worth of stormwater utility infrastructure improvements that now start to take precedent over some of our other capital improvement projects based off of regulatory compliance. So it would be prudent, even if we started with baby steps to explore this and look at the opportunities to reduce the general residential tax rate because this user fee is not necessarily held up against our rate in our tax fee. So as you're looking to secure funding for future giant projects, Green Meadow, Alumni Stadium, potentially other aspects, roads, et cetera, we're dangerously close to our tax rate cap. And reducing some of that general tax load on our yearly operating budget and pushing off onto enterprise funds, you'll actually hear me pitch a solid waste enterprise fund in, probably in a couple of weeks. Getting that away from our operating budget allows for more flexibility within our tax rate cap. So just kind of consider that as you're developing your overall five-year financial plans on how we're going to accomplish as many projects as we can for the town moving forward.
Any other questions from the board members? Sarah, thank you for the presentation. Chris, did you have anything?
No, I was, I was impressed we got the Standells in there on the first slide. That was
Well, you know, the red socks won. That's, that's what the, that's typically what that means.
Had to work that in.
It's all good information.
So thank you, Sarah, for your presentation, Wayne and Justin. Thank you for being here to, to support. And we'll look forward, I guess, to the, to the results of the, of the study.
Sounds great. Nice to meet you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The second part of that is the Complete Streets Tier Three Grant Award, which I assume I'm turning it over to Justin for that as well.
Sure, David, I'll take it. So as the board may or may not know, again, you've got another standard contract from the state of Massachusetts. The Commonwealth loves to put these out there. For those viewing, we, the Town of Maynard was lucky to receive a large Complete Streets Grant Award on the back of Megan, myself, Bill, Wayne. There was a good grant group. So I don't, I, I don't want the DPW to take the credit. OMS really, really shined on this one. But in front of you, you see the standard contract so that we can move forward with the process. And we're looking to have myself and Greg Johnson also be sign-off authorities in regards to the invoicing process of the project as we typically do with, with these grant awards. So we're just looking for the board to approve this standard contract.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this?
I'm sorry, I have one question. I didn't get a chance to follow up earlier, but which, because we have gotten a lot of grants lately, which is fantastic. Which Complete Streets project in particular is this one for?
So this is technically three. We were awarded three hundred and ninety-nine thousand off the top of my head for three projects. Those three projects include the connection of a sidewalk and pedestrian safety improvements from the golf course to the Aspet River Rail Trail. Another one is technically a pedestrian crosswalk improvement on Acton Street, which leads to a conservation trail. I can't remember the road off the top of my head. It's across from the Fine Arts Center in that direction. I can't remember. But, and then another, the third one is
I think it's Gleason.
Yes, it is Gleason. Thank you, Wayne. And the third one is improvements to the corner of Mason and Summer Street, where the gym is for ADA improvements, curb extensions to help reduce some of the speed that comes off of Summer Street and turns down Nathan.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I didn't realize it was three in one. So thank you.
We got the max award. So we, so four hundred thousand is the max award and we pretty much were right there.
You, you're right, Justine. So typically it's like a contract per project, like they'll, and because but how the state does it, they're just making sure you abide by all the different state laws if they're going to give you money.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So when we put the grant application together though, it's one project that has multiple locations. So Complete Streets is very common for this situation. So our last Complete Streets project was multiple locations. It was the intersection of Main Street, Summer, and then there was Fine Arts moved up. We were able to secure that. So it's not uncommon for Complete Streets, as you heard Bill say earlier, it's more a concept and an industry standard within civil engineering world. So it tends to encompass a multiple locations to kind of fit together in a, in an overall scheme.
Great. Thank you.
I muted myself. Any other questions from the board? I'm sitting here talking.
Talking to yourself, that's
That's, that's typical. Any other questions or comments? Okay, and there is no mo, the, on this one, there is a motion.
I will move to approve the contract with the Mass Department of Transportation, Mast dot, in the execution of Complete Streets Tier Three Grant Award in the amount of three hundred ninety-nine thousand fourteen dollars and fifteen cents. Authorizing the Town Administrator and Director of Public Works to sign on behalf of the select board.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll go to vote. Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Grant team. And all right, item number ten, Green Meadow Elementary School Building Committee, extra services and service proposals. Greg, do you want to take this or?
Well, so it's not too complicated. I think it's a bit of a misnomer. So it sounds like extra services, which, which maybe it's not what we were expecting. We were doing a feasibility study for considering what new Green Meadow School, new, I put it in quotation marks because we don't know what it's going to look like, if it's a, it's a, if it's a alteration of the current structure or whatever new might, might be. But as we're going through the feasibility study and working with our, our design firm and there are some services in addition to, to what the original package included, but these are extra services. However, they are standard. So as Colliers International, that's our design firm of what they've, what they've informed and guided us to is that these were inevitable and these were, these were to be expected. So I don't know why they call them extra services, but that is how they're referred to in the MSVA process. You can see mostly it's related to the site work, you know, to, to look at what the existing conditions are and which will inform what, what potential construction or reconstruction may be for the site.
And there are four, there are four different motions present that you wish us to approve. Of four different, four different amounts. Okay.
Right. And, and we're also considered by the Green Meadow Building Committee, but the, but as the owners, as you are, the select board, it's, it goes to the select board.
Already approved by the, by the building committee, I assume?
Yes. Justine, do you want to add anything?
I was, I was going to say, so I don't know if we actually saw the proposals. We discussed it because that was actually the conversation we had was a, as far as extra services or included services. So to my understanding, it is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but you know, basically so that the, the money that we're paying for the feasibility study itself, this money is actually included in that. But because it's a contract, we do have to vote to allow the spending of this.
So it's
So it's not above and beyond what we were going to spend.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just an allocation from within.
Yes.
All right. So it's really, it's really just shifting money within what's already been approved by town meeting and everything else along the way. Okay. All right. So one at a time. And you know what, with, does anybody have any questions on anything else? Because otherwise we can just do one at a time, no questions or comments between each, and we'll just go right into the vote after the, the motion is made. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
I'll move to accept and approve the proposal from Excel Fire Protection Incorporated for the additional services for the hydrant flow testing consulting for the Green Meadow Elementary School feasibility study in Maynard, Mass. The service cost at thirteen thousand, thirteen hundred seventy-five dollars, authorized digital signature if approved.
Okay.
Okay, let's vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
I am a yes. On to number two.
Go ahead, Chris.
Move to accept and approve the proposal for Lord Environmental Incorporated for the additional services for the initial phase one environmental site assessment for the Green Meadow School feasibility study in Maynard, Mass, with a service cost of two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Third one.
I'll move to accept and approve the proposal from Universal Environmental Consultants for the additional services for the hazard materials inspections services for the Green Meadow Elementary School feasibility study in Maynard, Mass, with a service cost at three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and authorized use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
And let's vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Last one.
I will move to accept and approve the proposal from La LaF Geo-Technical Consulting, and my screen just went off, sorry, Incorporated for the preliminary geo-technical services for the Green Meadow Elementary School feasibility study in Maynard, Mass, with a service cost of twenty-one thousand fifteen dollars and fifty cents, authorized use of digital signature if approved.
Second.
Okay, we're going to vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
That's a, that's how I would have pronounced it.
Took me a second.
All right. We move on. Item number eleven, Suasco Climate Resiliency Coalition, which is a really just an endorsement of something that's going on over in Stowe, I guess. And, and ORS. So Greg, do you have a summary for us?
No. So the, this Town of Stowe, but amongst a, a number of the regional collaboration as well, both the nonprofits and other municipalities, is starting with ORS, which I had to look up the, with, I forget off the top of my head what ORS stands.
Organization for the Aspet River something.
I don't, I apologize, but that, yes, it is, it's another, it's a nonprofit for the protection of the riverways and whatnot in the watershed. So we got this letter requesting for the endorsement of, of this partnership. I think it, I think it makes sense. We're, we're always sort of cognizant of and sensitive to our place amongst the watershed. And so I would, I would recommend this endorsement. I think it is also good timing because it happens to be on the same agenda as Sustainability Committee. And it is act, asking for a representative to serve on behalf of Maynard to this, to this coalition. Potentially that, that, that could come through a member of Sustainability Committee, unless, unless one of you wants to attend one of those meetings.
Congratulations, Greg. Congratulations, Greg.
No, 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 I'm not on the same. Um, but they're a group, they're a good group anyways. I've, I've been to, uh, some ORS meetings in the past and, um, I think it's good. I think it's a good partnership in the area anyways. And it's something we're already sensitive to is our, we just got done with the MS four presentation. Like we're very sensitive to the, the, to our, um, stewardship of the waterways.
So you could say we're having a watershed, uh, watershed moment, right?
Well, I should, just, this is all just coincidence. Well, maybe it's coincidence. Nothing's really coincidental, but it all happens to be all on the same agenda.
Yep.
Okay. Do you say a motion?
Move to approve the, go ahead, Jeff.
No, go ahead, Armand.
Uh, move to, uh, approve the endorsement, uh, letter to in support of the climate resilience. Is that resilience it says? Yeah, resilience coalition presented by the town of Stowe and ORS for the Sudbury, Aspet, Concord Rivers watershed authorized the use of digital signature if needed or approved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. Jeff.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And Justine.
Yes.
I am a yes as well. All right. Uh, we have a couple, I think three, um, new articles to at least for drafts, for controls to, uh, to approve, accept and approve. Uh, or is it just one?
I think it's one with three drafts.
One with, yeah.
Yeah, it is just one, but it helps to see the comments. They don't like, you know, yeah.
Yep. And this one is, uh, can you, can you talk a little bit, uh, the state, the state open up the, uh, the opportunity for older, uh, retired police officers or how does, how do we get there?
Yeah, very good. Um, I don't know if chief's still on the line. That would have been, obviously he's, he's, but okay, so, um, the Police Reform Act, uh, that was, that was approved not that long ago. Um, sets a couple of requirements, one of which is to have, uh, special officers, which the town uses like you driving by, uh, Florida Road recently, you're going to see some special officers out there. So they're, they're out there, um, mostly for detail work, but they could be used in other aspects. Well, the state is now requiring them to have a certain amount of, um, municipal training, so more so than they've had in the past. Um, that's, that's a, that's a, that could be a challenge to a lot of municipalities. We're fortunate that we do have a, a good amount of retirees specifically, and they all have had the, the requisite academy training. Um, and it's, but the, the problem is they're retired. So, um, they're, they're aging out. So we do need to increase our, our acceptable age for, um, for those special officers, uh, so we can continue in that and then we can abide by the law. We, we're, we are lucky that we actually have the personnel to handle that, that if, well, that's again, if the board approves this charge, it goes to town meeting and then we're able to petition the state to allow this. Yeah, but whereas, you know, another, uh, on, a number of municipalities west of us that are just, they don't, don't have the police force. So they're, they're, uh, they're going to have a difficult time meeting this, this legal requirement, but this is not, this is not so much a hurdle for, for the town. And, um, and so if the, the board would like the, the, we can, we can put this off until the chief is available. I apologize for.
No, I think, I, I think I understand what's going on.
The one question I have, uh, well, the one question I have is, is the, so clearly Lisa's article is much longer than ours. Our proposed one.
Yeah, I think, I think as it kind of came in after the fact that we got it. So my recommendation is to approve Lisa's version, but I, I don't mean to, uh, to, I apologize for confusing you about that.
Okay.
Let me look real quick with the significant differences really quick.
There's like, it's like a page longer.
Yeah, no, fair point. I would. No, I don't want to admit that. I'm not strong. So if you don't mind, um, let's, let's, uh, if you don't. Yeah, please. Cause I, I'll file, I'll follow up about.
All right. Just put it on the next agenda with the other ones that are ready to go at that point. And we won't have, have much discussion on it other than just the, uh, which, which one we used.
Yeah, but also I'll, I'll, uh, I'll have chief give us some bullets and whatnot. Yeah.
All right. Item number 13 is the chair report. Um, I got a couple of items. Um, tomorrow, uh, is, uh, the school committee chair still on? Just so she remembers and Greg, so that you remember that we have our leadership meeting tomorrow night, five thirty with your, yourself, me, um, Brian and Hillary and, uh, we'll probably talk budget, I would imagine. Uh, so, and then, um, secondly, I wanted to remind the board, we are getting close to the time for, and I want to make sure we try to do it as timely as possible. Greg's, and I haven't even mentioned this to Greg, Greg's annual review, that we need to, um, get everybody the documentation out and get it back so that we can sort of be on the right schedule so that Greg doesn't go a year and a half close and, uh, and then get his review. So we'll start that process. Usually we bring in, Becky has some of the documents that you can share with us all too. And I'll speak to Becky so we can get them out, but just so it's on everyone's radar and let's target, um, you know, the end of April, early May as our, sort of our target day, even though I don't think it's probably not due until July in reality, given that that's when your contract, I think that's the date on the contract. So we'll get it done, but I didn't want it to be lost on the, uh, on the radar. So, um, we'll leave it at that. Those are my two items. So we will go to board members. Jeff.
Um, I've been attending some of the, uh, virtual seminars from the MMA meeting over the last few weeks are still going on. Um, and they're posting a lot of them online afterwards. So even if you miss the time, um, one, one benefit of the virtual format. Uh, but in particular, I attended one, uh, hearing somebody speak from the town of, I want to say it was Amherst. Um, and they decided to actually put increased citizen participation in their charter. That was such a, a big drive for them. And then they went over a, a number of different techniques in which they were acting upon that, including some use of data tools. So if you had say, uh, a reuse committee for a fire station or the Coolidge School or something like that, they would put up QR codes and figure out. Um, and they, they did a lot of talk about, you know, how to ask the right questions and to get the right kind of engagement response rather than opening it up to the internet. Um, I, I thought it was just very interesting, you know, it, it's not something that we can simply turn around and a diamond set up, but a lot of interesting tools and techniques there. So I thought that one was particularly, um, useful and maybe a sneak peek at, at some of the things that we'll want to engage with in the future. Um, the other thing that I thought was interesting, uh, listening to the opening speech by the governor and I forget the exact language, but I believe he said something around the lines of housing supply being the existential crisis, which I thought was a, a fairly strong, um, language for the governor to use, but, uh, it, it kind of resonated for me while watching the FinCom meeting this Monday and talking about, you know, potential sources of new revenue and looking at densification, uh, or, or other ways to encourage new growth. And so I just thought that was an interesting kind of link between what, you know, the governor was saying in his opening, uh, and some members of our own FinCom were saying in, in their board and connecting to some of the conversations we had tonight about, um, uh, districting and then figuring out how we want the town to, to move forward in the face of revenue challenges. Uh, those, that's the only thing for me. So, um, that will do it.
Thank you. And happy birthday, Jeff.
Thank you. It was.
It was yesterday, right?
It was yesterday, yes.
But we didn't meet yesterday, so you got, you got it today. Armand.
Um, so a lot of you, I don't know whether or not you were paying attention to, sometimes I pay attention to what was going on on, uh, on social media this past storm. Uh, there was a lot of goodwill that took place. Uh, people coming to each other's aids um, and helping out shoveling and plowing. Um, and I thought that was a, a good thing that was happening in our town. And Jen Picarelli, I think is going to be, uh, coming to us in the future meeting and, um, discussing an idea about how to recognize uh, the goodwill of some of our, um, town residents. I think it's, it would be nice to come up with some kind of a in recognition for people like that to help each other in town when, in, in need. Um, and the other, um, thing that I would like to do is, uh, thank Justin and his, uh, DPW crew. I, I think, um, under the circumstances, they did a great job keeping the roads cleared. Um, and the initial, uh, cleanup of the sidewalk, I know that they're going back and finishing up, um, that part of, uh, downtown area and some other streets. Um, but I just want to thank them and these crew for tirelessly working during the storm. So all I got to say. And happy birthday, Jeff.
Thank you. Uh, Chris.
Now, I would just reiterate, um, Armand's point about the DPW and the streets. I had to go to, from here to, from here only to, um, down by Delaney in, um, Harvard, the, the backside of Delaney from, most people don't know is actually Harvard, not Stowe. So I went to, um, it's where my son lives and I had to go there the other morning and it, of the snowstorm and Maynard's roads were down to the pavement and the other two towns that we stole in Harvard were, um, almost impassable. And it wasn't, it wasn't five o'clock in the morning or six o'clock in the morning. It was like nine o'clock in the morning and Maynard's streets were, uh, you know, dry into the bone and the other two streets were literally almost impassable. So, you know, kudos to our, uh, our DPW as usual. And that's really it.
Thank you. Justine.
And again, I'm going to echo the same thing, um, just because of, of my field. Um, they, they did a really great job. I know how hard our staff works, um, especially with things like this, especially on overnights. Um, you know, and I know that there was, you know, I know that there's a little bit of frustration about, um, the, the sidewalk bankings, um, but I also have to reiterate the fact that, um, the, there are people that are actually doing this plowing. So we need to let them rest. So they're actually, um, well rested to use the equipment to be able to remove the bankings. So sometimes it doesn't happen as fast as we all want it to. Thank goodness. These storms only come around once in a while. Um, but I think that they've done a, a great job and I'm really, really proud of them.
Right. So we are, uh, actually we will be getting together next on our Saturday meeting, the, uh, the 12th. And for anybody watching or anybody that will be watching, um, if you're interested in the budget and the presentation of the budget, that would be your opportunity to see some of the rationale as to, uh, where things are going. So, um, that is a week from this Saturday and, uh, we, uh, we will be together virtually. Greg will send out the, uh, the link as always and it'll be posted. And, uh,
Did we establish a time? Is that nine AM or?
Yeah, it was a good question.
Okay.
Is it nine? Okay.
Nine AM for coffee, right? So.
We don't, we don't get, we don't get the, even the, the, the donut that we used to get.
People who want to listen to complain is not going to get donuts.
Yeah. I'm going to have my virtual, virtual coffee.
Yeah.
So, um, you can still have coffee while you're sitting there. And, uh, we're scheduled, what? It's basically nine to noon.
That's standard. Yep. But, uh, I, uh, I take direction from the chairs. So whatever you guys.
Yeah, I, I actually, um, that is, that is a whatever you call it, accepted students day at a school. So I got to go, uh, to be at that in the afternoon. Um, so I will be, noon time will be my cutoff, pretty much.
Great.
Uh, so I think we can plan on, on that. Obviously if everybody wants to continue on, that's fine by me. But I'll probably be leaving at noon. So, all right. Thank you, everybody. Be well. Hopefully this storm that they're talking about Friday doesn't hit us and, uh,
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Take care, everybody.
Have a great night, everybody.